All right, good morning, everybody. I'm calling the board of the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for this Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, and we'll start as we always start with the Pledge of Allegiance. But I would ask if as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we take just a moment before we start the pledge, just to remember 9/11/2001 and the impact that that had on all of us everywhere. So. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you again, and good morning. We'll start as we always start with public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on today's agenda or really anything you'd like to comment on. Anybody wishing to do so, come right on up to the microphone. And seeing no one coming to the microphone, we'll move on. So our next two items, two separate items, but they kind of go together. And Brenda, how about if we have you and Dan? Are you coming up for this, or you're just going to start with Brenda?
Present.
Okay. Good morning, Brenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm feeling a little lonely. John was supposed to be with me today. He is under the weather, so I'll take the lead on this. So I know there's been quite a bit of chatter about the fact that we are moving four projects through the state process at the Iowa Economic Development Authority. That itself is very exciting news. What makes it even more exciting is the fact that the development's occurring in four different Story County communities. And so to be able to see not just in one particular area of the county, but really all four corners have projects going in, happen to be going here all at the same time later this month. So they'll actually be in front of the Iowa Economic Development Board on September 21st. So we're waiting patiently. That's an important milestone for us to move these projects through. Two of the projects are of the nature that they need some special infrastructure consideration. One of the ways that we're looking to support these projects is we're going to need some road improvements made to support the projects in Nevada and Story City. And the Department of Transportation has a program fully designed to support immediate job opportunities and capital investment. And so that's really the purpose of our discussion today is to talk with you about those two projects and request some assistance, perhaps on a couple of different fronts, but really hopefully some resolutions and support today. Those applications, actually, as soon as we wrap up today, those applications will be going to the DOT. They were actually due yesterday, but we put those off till today. And we actually have three of our communities here today. So we have Surris and Huxley and Nevada here. The project in Huxley actually does not require road in Berkeley, but we're very excited about that and the company that's being proposed for Huxley. So I think we should start with Burke, the Burke project in Nevada. And we have Matt, the city manager here, who talked about that project and also some representatives from the company. So I'd like to have them.
Outstanding. Yeah, so before they come, let's just make sure that, so let's view this as the overview of what our conversation could be today. So the first question I have, and Dan, maybe more for you. Have we ever had four projects in front of the state at one time? I understand that this is definitely the first time we've had four from four different communities in Ames, but in your time, have we had four?
Well, good morning. No, in fact, I told the AADC Board of Directors, we still won't met, and we outlined the four projects. They said, please don't get accustomed to this. We don't want this to be the expectation. It's really unique. It's unique in and of itself that there's four projects in Story County. It's even more unique and gratifying than some four different communities. I don't think it gets any better than that. So Brenda mentioned the company in Huxley called Automed. They're going in an existing building in Busack Commons. Of course, we can talk about Burke here in a moment. We'll talk about EV in Story City. And then 3M is doing a size of very sizable expansion in Ames inside their existing facility.
Could I interrupt for just a second here?
Sure.
On our agenda today is a request for a resolution for Nevada and a request for a resolution for Story City. Okay? I would like to make sure that we stay to what we're discussing today. I was excited to see that we just had the two resolutions on here and that the chatter that's been going on behind the scenes about developing some kind of assistance program was left off of this. So I appreciate the information we provided by the AADC staff today. I just would request that we focus and we stay right there.
Exactly, and that's exactly where we're headed, of course. But in order to have a full conversation, I believe it's important to get the context that all this is happening in. So you're 100% right in that we're dealing with two resolutions of support that don't even go down the road of talking about more than we're supporting of the projects.
Correct.
What that support might look like, that's a conversation for down the road. But it is really important, of course, that we understand that this conversation, they don't occur by themselves. It's part of an overall conversation of things that are happening. And that's the reason that I thought it was so important for Brenda and Dan to lay the groundwork for us of everything that's going on as we consider these two resolutions and then depending on the outcome of those resolutions, down the road, consider other things that may or may not come. Marty, do you have any questions?
You only have to look at the agendas on the Ames City Council. This is before them today. You only have to look at the agendas of Huxley. This is before them today. And Nevada spoke to one of these components here last night. We are taking our turn at it. This is the conversation that has begun.
I would like to.
I would like to think that we have the ability just to be informed, because this has been quietly going on behind the scenes, how we bring it to the public forum, that we have the ability to educate ourselves and the public at the same time. I don't think we're dis-served by hearing what we're hearing.
Okay, I just want to point out, too, that, you know, part of the reason for the agenda is not only to keep us all in control, is to let the public know what's being discussed. So from a general perspective, the environment is fine, but to discuss any kind of details about any kind of support.
Yeah, I couldn't disagree more. If we ever get into a situation, of course, where we're considering items, where we're making decisions based on information, then 100%, you are right on the money. It needs to be on the agenda. But when we talk about everything that's happening that factors into any decision we might make, because we don't make decisions in a vacuum. We make decisions based on a lot of different information that comes at us. And it's really interesting to me that you're going to choose today to push back against good things that are happening and us talking about good things that are happening in the context of how they impact decisions that we're going to talk about today. Anything further before we move on to the presentation?
Just that I think it's a little misinterpretation about what you say I'm going to say.
I think it's pretty clear.
I don't think so, but let's go back to this.
All right. Anything further before we move on to Burke?
So I think Matt Harrison and Chad Rannick are here to talk about the project. This one's complex.
Yeah, absolutely.
What you're going to hear from them is it's sizable. It's enormous. It's a very large capital investment, very large number of new job employment opportunities, career opportunities. And so there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces. Today is one piece. There's federal, there's state, there's local, local times two, there's community college, there's a whole litany of things that are coming together or need to come together for the company, and they'll talk about this, for the company to choose this location versus someplace else.
Absolutely.
With that, Matt, Chad, please.
Absolutely. And while you guys are recording, congratulations on everything you've got moving right now. And this is a, this is a fun conversation to have with a lot of people.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good morning, Matt. Good morning, Chad.
Good morning.
All right. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you for allowing us to. What I would really like to do is just kind of give you a brief, quick overview of what happened last night at the Nevada City Council meeting. And then we're going to turn it over to Chad, and Chad will give you a highlight of what he presented to the council last night, because I feel it's very important that you and Dan from the Burke perspective of what's going on, and then we can come back with any questions. So at last night's meeting, the Nevada City Council did approve a resolution of support for this project. You and Matt spoke, quite frankly, without stealing all of Chad's thunder, it was very complex. This is something we've been working on for about five months.
Yeah.
About five months. The biggest component that the city is battling, quite frankly, is the wastewater treatment facility, and we're still going to work through that. Not everything in the resolution is quite worked out yet, but it's on the path to getting worked out. So there's a lot of questions that we're going to have to answer from the city in cooperation with work, and we've partnered together to make this happen in Nevada. The one thing, though, I am going to say real quick, without the, without the consideration of Ames tonight at their meeting, this project would not have been possible, quite frankly. So I have to say thank you to them, because even though they haven't officially agreed to that, they've been willing to actually partner with us in a way that I don't know that's ever been done before. So in the interim of this project, we wouldn't have been able to accept it until our wastewater treatment agreement or wastewater treatment facility was completed, which would have been 2023. They're willing us to even consider taking some of that waste, actually, Nevada, the city of Nevada, by a viable location for this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chad and let him give his presentation. And then if you have questions for me at the end, we'll go from there.
Burke, thank you. Hi, Chad. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Chad Rannick. I'm the president of Burke Organization. I've been the president now for three years. As Matt alluded to, I certainly want to thank many, many individuals, the city, the state, city engineers, city attorneys. As Matt mentioned, this project could have stalled and/or been canceled in a number of different aspects along the way, but through cooperation and collaboration, we've been able to continue. And I'm proud to be in front of the county board supervisors today to let you know that Nevada is a finalist for this project. A little bit of background on the Burke organization. Burke was purchased by Hormel Foods in 2007. Great, great acquisition for the Hormel company, but it also requires a different level of approvals now that we're dealing with a company of that size. I'm here on behalf of the Nevada site. I want to make it clear that I want to see nothing more than Nevada be chosen as the site for this proposed expansion, but I also need to be upfront and honest that Hormel has 35 locations domestically, and at every point in time, when we, when we look at and review any type of expansion, we look at all 35 locations. And so if you may, I've got a couple of different boards that might help us walk through what we're thinking.
I'll change.
And I don't know if it's easier to sit or stand, or can you hear me over there?
Yeah, we're going to hear you. That little square microphone picks it pretty well.
So I'm just, I'm going to just point out some areas on here and then put it down to the floor. I'm going to kind of be referencing two different diagrams, but this is the Burke Corporation and the Burke lot. We own roughly 21 acres of property in Nevada. Roughly seven acres is currently developed. So what we're going to be talking about is this 14 acres. Again, we're going to leave some green space. We're not consuming it all. We're going to be talking about this 14 acres for this proposed expansion. And so.
And so for anybody who's trying to figure out how this all fits, our Justice Center, the county's Justice Center, is just to the northwest, kind of patty corner to the northwest from this one.
Correct. Correct. And so again, it's, we are in still the exploratory phases, so I apologize for the crudeness of this diagram. But what we'd be looking to do is, again, this is, this is the plant that's down here. Now, this is slightly, I mean, this is inverted, but the expansion, we go into that at open area. We'd be talking about around 200,000 square feet, which would virtually double the size of our industrial footprint now. We would attach the two buildings through our freezer and have the plant flow in versus the same way that our current plant flows, meaning we bring in raw materials here. That's the west side, and this is north here. All raw materials come in from the west, furnishing both plants with those materials. Product can be produced, frozen, packaged, and shipped out of the east side. Currently, we ship from here. We can be shipping out to locations here. Again, roughly 200,000 square feet. Early estimates on financial commitment from the company is in the $150 million range, and we anticipate this project bringing approximately 210 new jobs to the area. We currently employ 350 jobs. We are the largest employer in the city of Nevada, so that 210 would be in addition to our current staffing. A couple of the asks, frankly, as to why we're here, a couple of infrastructure improvements that we, a number of them we're dealing with the city on, I won't bore you with those details, but a couple of them that will require some additional funding. I'm going to bounce back and forth a little bit. This entrance here is 17th Street, this existing road. So we've got a resolution in front of the city debate case that we received, call it conditional approval, I'm not sure what the political jargon is, but last night we got approval. So there's no change to that. However, we do need, we are asking to install an additional entrance of our plat here, and this will accomplish a number of things. Number one, it will allow us from a safety perspective to separate our truck traffic from our team member traffic. Number two, it'll alleviate congestion coming off of 19th Street is right here. This is D Avenue. It'll alleviate traffic and congestion because if we've got trucks waiting to make that left-hand turn and not knowing how that might affect this intersection and other neighboring businesses, we believe that's the right thing to do. And then coming down, we got one more entrance that we're asking for. This entrance is here already. These two are here. We're asking for another entrance to be cut up here, which is this entrance. And again, we're going to separate that out. We won't have any team member traffic coming in and out of that area, but that will be for our trucks delivering raw materials to this side of the plant, as well as we'll have some load out here with some grease that we have to deal with, that we don't send down the wastewater stream. And then the last piece would be, this is D Avenue here, South D. This is currently a gravel road. And as we look at this flow and the size and the scope and the team members and the flow of team member traffic, truck traffic, as well as taking into consideration the community and the city aspect, we firmly believe that paving D Avenue, I mean, that verge, that ends right into our plant, but there's some other neighboring business, Mid America Manufacturing and Hertz Farm Management is down here as well. We believe that paving D Avenue will allow a number of options for this entire traffic pattern to come together and to alleviate some potential concerns that might be created by developing this.
Okay, so that would get paved all the way over to 11th?
Yes.
And Matt, talk to us about the traffic on 19th Street. Is it, are we going to require a stoplight or anything out there on 19th Street?
The 19th Street, currently, we're in the process of evaluating it for a stop sign, but due to this planned expansion, we're actually going to take a step back and see if we're flirting with that line of a stoplight. So we're going to do a traffic study to see if especially the B Avenue and 19th, which is the easy McDonald's corner, that traffic count is very high already, so that might qualify for a stoplight. So part of, part of the money that we're trying to obtain from that rice grant would be to pay for South D Avenue and to make sure that we are doing the traffic study and if there's any other improvements to incorporate from the city to make that flow better. The truck traffic will about double, I believe, so we're wanting to make sure that that flows. And we all know that especially those, that area down there, about 3:30 to about 5 o'clock is really congested, so we're going to look at some of the ways that we can improve that as part of that rice money.
And Matt, all of the streets that you're talking about and improvements are all within the incorporated living of Nevada, correct?
Correct.
Okay. What can you tell us, the 210 jobs that you've estimated would be created, what can you tell us about the wages with those 210 jobs, how the ranges that those would fall in?
Yeah, so our starting wage is north of $6.50 an hour, and we anticipate 52 of those jobs qualifying for the high-quality jobs measurement.
Say that again.
Sixteen or six?
Sixteen fifty, yeah, I'm sorry. Sixteen fifty an hour is the starting wage at our entry level, with 52 of those jobs qualifying under the high-quality jobs program.
Which means they're, what, high-quality jobs somewhere 22?
Twenty-one eighty-five.
Twenty-one eighty-five, yeah. And there will be some additional management staff as well that will be involved with this expansion.
Super. Well, I guess, first of all, I would say wow. What a, what a great concept, and we're so appreciative that Nevada and Story County is a finalist for something like this. Matt, I'm sure that a couple of months ago, a few months ago, you didn't think this was something you were going to, you were going to have to be dealing with. It's exciting that you are. And then I would just say this, so I was grilling steak yesterday next to Mayor Hala, the mayor of Ames, and we talked a little about this, and you rightly point out Ames' willingness to at least consider the possibility of handling some of the wastewater on a temporary basis while Nevada shores up some of their systems. He felt really good about where that conversation moved. I will see when it gets to the city council, but it's a conversation, and I'll look to Dan, it's a conversation that probably we couldn't even have, have had a few years ago. So that's really, really encouraging as well.
Yeah, this project has had its bumps in the road from wastewater treatment side, but I feel pretty confident we've worked through those and we will continue to work through those. And our willing, their willingness to at least hear it makes this a possibility for us now rather than waiting five more years. So we appreciate that.
Outstanding. Questions, Horace?
I keep a little checklist kind of about what would be something that we would endorse. This is the first time we've been asked, but it's been asked a few years ago. Yeah, this project meets every one of my own internals with flying colors, with the exception of one that has more of a concern or preference of mine. I guess it's a concern from the standpoint that you are a very large company, very, very large. In fact, I did a little quick research last night, and you're on target to disperse $1 billion to your investors this year. That's that giving you all your bills, internationally, except, okay. And so it's my understanding that part of this package is a demand for 10 years, 100% tax abatement. And of course, that affects not only the city of Nevada, who can or can't give it away, but it's up to the Nevada school, community school district to decide if they want to make a statement on it. But for me, it's a concern that it's more than would be the typical giving away of monies that would come to Story County offers. So can you address the tax abatement situation?
I can't see Chad, so. I know he's about to speak, but someone, I was here last night. Thank you, Chad. I'll try, I'll try to address this. I'll be honest with you, a 10-year, 100% tax abatement has put some limitations on future development, but one of the arguments that I can make to this is the ability to use roughly about one and a half, and that's a rough estimate at this point, paving the road, doing some infrastructure that, at 19th, South 19th and B Avenue. That justification does more for our community in that area than just the project. So it's not as if we're not getting anything for the 10 years, 100% tax abatement. We're actually getting a road paved, we're getting some intersection improvements that we know of. The other thing that's a huge issue in addition to this is it allows the city of Nevada an opportunity for a housing market, and that's the struggle that we're going to have, and quite frankly, that's my next big project, is trying to figure out the housing. So this road, yes, we're doing some tax abatement for the project, but the opportunity that this road provides to this community, we wouldn't see without it. And Mr. Colain and I have had numerous conversations about it, and quite frankly, that was our competition's, I guess, offering, if you will, and to be in the running for the project, we had to be there. I understand the concern, and I've had several of the council members ask me that same question, but it's not as if we're not getting something back in return that isn't going to cost the taxpayers of this county for those improvements. So with that, I'm pretty comfortable that we're going to see some investment back into our community that offers out to everybody that's in that area over there with the traffic flow and with that new road. So I don't know if you can accept that answer, but I keep telling myself, it is better than that area down there to a point where the future growth that comes from this far outweighs, in my opinion, what we're doing for the Nevada.
And on the positive side, if you will, of this issue, okay, because now is that it's my understanding that there's not going to be required any more services from Story County. So in other words, we may be giving up tax revenue, but we're also not going to be having to add additional deputies as a result of this, so we're not, it's not a secondary road. So we're not really taxing the county expenditures anymore, or sorry, taxing used as in the broader term, as opposed to assessed tax. So that was what I kind of weighed out about, well, all right, we're not getting revenue as a county, but conversely, it's not costing us anything to, for this particular project, because everything's internal.
And I'd be careful about anything, because anytime you add 210 jobs and those that are going to live here, or even those that are going to just drive in and out every day, it is going to require, now whether it requires directly more from us, I would be careful about anything. The other thing that, this whole idea of the 10-year, 100% abatement, I really appreciate the way that Matt spells it out, that there's more than just the taxes associated with Burke that we're talking about impacting the community. But the second thing to remember is in year 11, if we don't get this project in year 11, in essence, we got zero. If you do get this project, you've got an asset, another $150-plus million that all of a sudden rolls onto the tax rolls. And one thing that I kind of smile when I think of this, Horace, you're starting to recognize that in government, 10 years is not that long. I know it drives you nuts, but 10 years is not that long a window to take a look at. So I appreciate the questions, and I think you're right on the money how you're looking at this, and I appreciate that they tend to check most of your boxes. So Marty?
I appreciated the presentation last night of the city council. I was pleased to see that they had very little heartburn. I'm sure that they had a chance to work through this, do the rough and tough on it to get to the point that it was a clear, easy yes in terms of us to decide what we want to do, where we want to be. Also, you've got a data knowledge base. Don't worry about the schools as far as the bright and the revenue. It's like 100% TIP zone goes away in year 11. They don't lose anything, they gain anything, but we probably likely have the influx of people that work here, of course, that workforce will probably bring kids and stay in, follow some kids.
Yeah, that's right.
Don't worry about schools, that's a nonstarter. When you saw the run-up of mid-states here, one of the asks that they had of the city was to pay South D. As this is something that dovetails very nicely, this is something that actually you're helping, not just, it's not just a Burke help, it's as you're watching that construction process, when you go to in front of Justice Center there on South D and down South 11th, this is going to be a benefit to them, because that is a, we're fortunate to have kept them in Nevada area. We are pleased that they are doing what they're doing. They need this as well, so this is not just a Hormel Burke issue. I think that on a community-county sideline, the 10-year abatement is something that the market was set in water. I guess it's a nonstarter for us to even get to the point to ask anybody in the city of Nevada, the county, or anybody else, if we don't match that.
in the city of Nevada, the county, or anybody else if we don't match that. I think the, you heard 35 sites, I think they're all probably competitive, maybe not all equal, but if that is the ask, that is either you're all in or you're not, or you're watching it happen.
The other thing I'm weighing, or I weighed in this, okay, I think this is a better thought over the weekend in this whole thing, is the fact that, I didn't know that there are 35 sites, okay, in competition, but I didn't know that there are other sites in competition. So I've already pointed out about you being a big company and having less money. What the other side of it is, is that this is a very complex situation. The fact that Cormel slash BERC or BERC slash Ormel, whatever you prefer to, okay, is that there are willingness to make compromises, there are willingness to take a look at for a few years, not the ideal situation to deal with wastewater, but you're still saying that we're one of the finalists. So I just want, some of this is thinking out loud, some of this is leaving for the record about why this may be that type of opportunity that I had indicated six months ago, we're discussing a little bit about tax abatements credits, et cetera, or is that this, it seems to be that kind of opportunity? And so I just want you to know that.
Good. I, I appreciate your thought process on all of this. Anything, any other questions or anything else that we need to hear before we move on to consideration of the resolution? Anything you guys want to add before we move on to consideration of the resolution? Brenda, Dan, anything else before we move on to consideration of the resolution?
There, there is just one other thing I'd like to make note of for the record. So Chad alluded to the high quality of the jobs being created and the large number, but I've been in the business 20 years, done a lot of the applications, I actually did the workforce part of their application. And their benefits, their profit sharing, their stack options, their gym opportunities, we would be remiss to, to not acknowledge the hidden paycheck that comes along with the 210 jobs that are going to be created as a result of this project.
Absolutely, and I really appreciate that. And just so that I've kind of got the numbers right in my head, it's somewhere between a third and a quarter of these jobs that are going to qualify, meaning they're greater than 22, I think you said 2285 an hour or greater, and the rest of them are still going to be north of 1650 an hour, somewhere in that 1650 to $22 an hour range.
Correct. And we, and Brenda's got the sheet there, we've got the starting wages, the way we've been discussing the wages with the, the state of Iowa and their economic development authority, we're looking at a three-year number, but yes, so I can get you exact specifics.
Yep.
Yes, and Brenda, can I just maybe just read from this so I, they're clear of any? So on the, on the low end, starting, it's 1627 on day one, but the three-year number is actually 1762.
Good.
And that is what the state of Iowa looks at for the high-quality jobs. How many jobs after 36 months of starting will meet that threshold? And so, correct?
Even on day one, we're still above $16 an hour.
Day one is 1627, but yeah, day three, that's 1650, I, I apologize for just using that number, becomes 1762.
Good. Outstanding. Anything?
I had the opportunity to hear it last night. I'm standing here in support, and anybody wants to hear a motion, I'll give it.
Yeah, let me do this, though. Let me, for the record, let me get this read in so that we're all on the same page. This is Resolution 1931. This is the resolution supporting City of Nevada's immediate opportunity rise grant application for BERC Corporation project improvements. Whereas BERC Corporation, in partnership with the City of Nevada, is pursuing expansion that would significantly increase their footprint at their Nevada-Iowa facility, create several hundred jobs, and require a significant capital investment, and whereas, BERC Corporation, a wholly owned subsidiary of Cormel Foods, is an exemplary corporate citizen who employs hundreds of Story County residents, thereby, thereby providing ongoing opportunities for investment and innovation that in turn enhances the economics of the entire state of Iowa, and whereas, the BERC expansion will involve construction of streets and utilities to serve the new and existing site, and whereas, the infrastructure improvements included in the rise grant application will serve the public good of the City of Nevada, and whereas, as part of the expansion of the City of Nevada is submitting an immediate opportunity rise grant application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for the necessary transportation infrastructure improvements tied to the project, and whereas, BERC Corporation has established their headquarters in Nevada and is the city's largest employer, and whereas, the proposed expansion will add 210 jobs within three years of the improvements being made and will require a capital investment of $150 billion, and whereas, the Iowa Economic Development Authority has intent to significantly invest in the proposed expansion and the U.S. Economic Development Administration is considering a significant investment as well, and whereas, the immediate opportunity rise grant is essential to the continued expansion of BERC Corporation and to the economic vitality of this industrial and commercial center in Nevada, and whereas, the existing roadways involved in this project are currently dedicated to public use, and whereas, all roadways to be considered or improved by this project will be dedicated to, to public use, and whereas, the City of Nevada is currently negotiating a development agreement with Cormel Foods slash BERC Corporation and will not sign an agreement with the I, with IDOT, Iowa Department of Transportation, for the rise grant until an acceptable development agreement is finalized with Cormel BERC, and now therefore, be it resolved by the Story County Board of Supervisors of Story County, Iowa, that the Story County Board of Supervisors endorses the project as described above, and be it resolved, that the board chair is directed to sign this resolution and staff is directed to assess mechanisms for the county to assist in such financial assistance programs and processes going forward, and be it resolved that the City of Nevada will assume jurisdictional responsibility for the new and improved roadways funded by this grant, and that all such roadways will be adequately maintained by the city, adopted this 11th day of September 2018. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Any comments, because I'll make a motion.
I do have some comments, they have to do with some work. Okay. So going down near the bottom, my biggest concern is the second to the last, oh, sorry, it's the first be it resolved.
Yep.
So second to the last.
Be it resolved that the board chair is directed to sign this resolution and staff is directed to assess mechanisms for the county to assist in such financial assistance programs and processes going forward.
I just want to emphasize here that all we are doing with this is saying is that staff will look at possible ways to assist in financial assistance. This is not a promise, because we haven't discussed a promise about any type of financial assistance. So I want to emphasize that, and we asked by two fellow board members, do you think we need to add another clause saying if we so decide in the future or whatever, are you fine without it, that goes?
I'm fine without it. I mean, clearly, whatever staff would assess would have to come back to the board supervisors for us to make any determination, and this clearly does not commit us to anything. If we pass this, it just says, hey, we're in full support and we're going to look at ways that we can possibly monetize that support.
Okay.
Fair?
Okay, that's fair.
Resolution speaks for itself, we're just engaging staff to go do their research, come back to us if we interest here. I'll make a call today. I make a motion?
I have another.
One more. One more, Marty.
All right.
Okay. So I'm going to go up to the second paragraph and it talks about, is an exemplary corporate citizen. And I'm going to make this in conjunction with the other application here that describes the other, the Story City one, the applicant is a model corporate citizen. Those are pretty subjective terms and maybe we could just delete the phraseology from this and just talk about, and it's clear you employ hundreds, et cetera, and that would all stand. But I'm uncomfortable with us starting to assign adjectives to, to companies like that because they don't have a definite.
And I, and I appreciate your discomfort, and from my perspective, and then we'll get, get Marty's, I think they are an exemplary corporate citizen or a model corporate citizen, and we're thrilled to have them here. And so I feel pretty strongly that that underscores why we're offering this resolution of support, why would we do it if they, if they weren't a great corporate citizen for us here locally? And, and Morris, let me just say, I, I understand where you're coming from, and if that's a deal breaker for you, then I'm willing to move ahead with it as a deal breaker for you, but I think it's important that it stays in there. Marty, I don't know what you think.
No, I have no qualms on assigning any human characteristics to BERC slash Ormel. Resolution is, I've read through it, and I've read through it, I have no discomfort with its language, I'm not looking to parse anything, I'm not that kind of, I think it's very plain on its face, I accept it as it's written. And if that's your only concern, I'm ready to make a motion.
Let's make sure that Morris is, if we need to talk about this.
All right, let's see. It is not a big enough of concern for me, honestly, to say no.
Yep.
All right? It's something I would like in future, as we deal with these types of things going forward, is the possibility of staff can take a look at how there might be other ways to frame it that would be more in reference to us, like in good standing taxes or something. But anyway, it's not a deal breaker for me.
Good. Anything further, Morris?
None, none, I'm done.
Okay. Marty, now you're on.
I move a consideration of the rise grant application, Resolution 1931, in support of the City of Nevada, as presented today.
I will second.
You have a motion and a second, further discussion. You guys did a great job. Thank you for coming, thank you for the consideration, and I'm thanking you, I have, for your company, the consideration, I know that you've got a lot of different choices and there's lots of moving parts, really, really appreciate the consideration you're giving to Nevada and Story County for what I think would be an outstanding project.
You're welcome. We're proud to be in Nevada and thank you for this opportunity.
Absolutely. Any further?
No.
Tiddy?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1931, supporting the City of Nevada's immediate, immediate opportunity rise grant application is hereby adopted by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Moving on, same, same vein, now let's consider a rise grant for, this is 1932, for the City of Story City.
Well, whoever, yes, we have two of these to talk about in one day. So joining us today to talk in more detail about the EB expansion is Mark Jackson.
Yep.
Oh, it's Mark Jackson.
Not Mark Jackson.
The taller version.
Hey, body.
No, not Mark. Get the chair warm for you. I figured if I didn't, I'd be.
Morning, Mark.
Marty, thank you so much for being here today.
Do you want the board back on, Marty? Good morning, Mark.
I'm Mark Jackson, City Administrator in Story City, and just kind of a brief overview. And it shouldn't take as long as the Nevada one, because it's pretty straightforward, but EB Manufacturing is proposing to do a major expansion of their facility in Story City. This is a third-generation, family-owned business, company with us, they're headquartered in Blue Ball, Pennsylvania. They also have a facility in Pomus, Ohio, or just outside of Pomus, Ohio. What they are, they came to Story City in approximately 2004, 2005. What they're proposing to do is they are expanding their existing facility by 41,000 square feet. They're also building a separate facility of somewhere between 12,000 and 16,000 square feet. Their current employment base is 97 jobs. They propose to create 67 additional jobs. Their investment for this project is approximately $7.2 million. And our rise grant application actually changed on Friday, made it a lot, thank God, my army was fine either, but made it, believe me, they didn't land on where that second building was going to be until Friday afternoon.
Right.
And so the original intent was they were looking at either locating this facility at the southeast corner of their property or at the northeast corner of this property. So if the northeast corner is where EB Drive and Austed Avenue are, the southeast corner would be down where Rich Olive Street is, which would mean we would have had to extend that street from EB Drive all the way down south to Rich Olive Street. And so what they're doing is they've decided to locate it at the northeast corner, so all we have to do is extend Austed Avenue by approximately 350 feet, which is good. So our rise application, the total cost of the project is approximately $336,000. But of that, a little over $215,000 is what's considered rise eligible. So our grant application, the Department of Transportation, is approximately a little over $172,000. Our 20% match of that's a little over $43,000. The rest of it is, we've decided to extend the water main and loop that system in.
Perfect. So request of a letter of support, just, just in support of your application, is that before the, before Iowa for the rise grant? Questions for Mark or Brenda on this project?
No, and I appreciate you coming in to kind of, I can individually give us all kind of a preview of it because it gives time to think a little bit about some of these. And this did meet all of my checklist, okay, for that. So I just really don't have any questions for you. Let's talk about the tax abatement, just since I asked about the last one, but it's a standard, right?
Ours is, ours is a standard tax payment, 75% and decreases 15% each year, so it's over a five-year period.
And do you have the numbers on the 64 jobs, kind of the pay scale of those 64 jobs?
That's the same. Just general. It's 67.
67.
Now it's 67, I had 64.
These, all, all of our projects have been interesting in terms of jobs, but what I would tell you is of that 67, 22 are above the, the wage threshold for the state. So again, a very similar neighborhood in terms of wages, 16, $18 an hour for depending on welder or receiving or service technicians, but I would note that 22 do need.
So again, about a third.
Yes, and again, I, I, looking at the, the benefit packages of both of these companies, it's been a lot of years and a number of applications that I've only, it's interesting, if you don't meet the criteria in terms of your health insurance and the percentages you're paying on your health insurance, you need to dig into the benefit packages a lot more. Both of these projects are paying enough and alls we had to really look at was the percentages they pay of their, of their folks' health insurance plans for both individuals and families. And again, that's a real test for both of these companies in terms of their commitment to their people.
Outstanding. Marty, questions?
No, I, just a quick map here is that we just had the first part of our conversation today in our meeting, weekly meeting, as we're talking about 277,000 county. Mark's story here, as he brings it to us on behalf of the city, is, is a pretty special one. Nevada hosts the welding component for the EMAC program that I think would be well to somebody to speak to EMAC as far as expanding it because they only have one section here. I'll make all of these welders, you're going to need welders up there. I think it's only a matter of time before the industry have you up there, Mark. You're right next to Rich Olive.
Well, there's a lot of people that want to ride over me, Marty, so it might be appropriate.
That would be your story, but no, I think this is a, is pretty, I would turn to Morrison and just say, are you okay with the, the language here? So I'd like to.
Since we've already had a discussion, okay, I'm okay with it.
And actually, can answer that question, you know, when I was massaging words within Missouri, I spent a lot of time looking at that particular word, and I would not have included that word had I not bought that, because I've got some citizens and I've got some companies that I would not use that word or that paragraph with. But EB, I can sit here and tell you I will. And there's a, and I would say for Story City, there's a real emotional attachment with EB because it is family-owned, it's a yellow family, and it's probably outside of the Pelican there, it was our first company over there, and they are involved and committed and live there. And so I, I, I understand what you're saying, I wouldn't have included in there if I didn't believe it.
And I suspect the other also, I'm familiar with BERC's long history of community involvement.
And then one last quick thing is that we want to thank, and I think Matt would probably agree, that Brenda has been in ZEC tremendous help on this. Brenda really did a lot of legwork, especially with the grant with the Economic Development Authority or whatever their name is. So a real special thanks to Brenda for all the work she did for us, it was truly valuable.
Yeah, well, I think it's right to note, and you can single out Brenda, but also right to include the entire team at the AEC. And Mark, you were part of the conversation five or six years ago. Um, and Mark, you were part of the conversation five or six years ago when we were talking about how do we start to pull the whole county together on economic development opportunities? And this is a demonstration of one of the benefits. The other thing I wanna go back to is, Marty just rightly pointed out that we're approaching three hundred jobs in these two projects, but when you think of all four projects, it's actually a number of between four and five hundred jobs. And just to put that in context, we're talking about four projects approaching five hundred jobs before Iowa, coming up on September twenty-first, from two thousand to two thousand and ten. In all of Story County over ten years, we added five hundred private sector jobs, and now we're talking about doing that in one month. Uh, projects talking about doing that in one month is pretty spectacular. Anything further before we consider the resolution?
None.
None.
Alright, resolution nineteen thirty-two, resolution supporting immediate opportunity RISE grant application for, uh, MH EB, uh, city of Story City, Iowa. Whereas MH EB in partnership with the city of Story City is pursuing an expansion that would significantly increase their facility and employment base in Story City, Iowa. And whereas EB is a model corporate citizen with approximately a hundred employees and property valuation of nearly two point three million, that in turn enhances the economy of Story County. And whereas EB expansion will involve the extension of Austed Avenue. And whereas, as part of the expansion, the city of Story City will be submitting an immediate opportunity RISE grant application to the Iowa Department of Transportation for the necessary transportation infrastructure improvements tied to the project. And whereas, the infrastructure improvements included on the RISE grant application will require a local public investment. And whereas, the proposed expansion will add sixty, now sixty-seven, sixty-four on our resolution, sixty-four jobs within three years of the improvements being made, and will require a capital investment of seven point two million dollars. And whereas, an application has been submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for financing incentives related to the expansion. And whereas, the immediate opportunity RISE grant is essential to the continued expansion of EB and to the economic vitality of the industrial area in Story City and Story County. And whereas, the existing roadways involved in this project are currently dedicated to public use. And whereas, all roadways to be constructed or improved by this project will be dedicated to public use. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the Story, by the Board of Supervisors of Story County, Iowa, that the Story County Board of Supervisors endorses the project as described above. And be it resolved that the board chair is directed to sign this resolution and economic development staff is directed to submit this document as part of the immediately, immediate opportunity RISE grant application to the Iowa Department of Transportation. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move that we approve resolution nineteen thirty-two as presented.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Further discussion? Mark, Brenda, anything to add? Dan, anything else? Super. Olson?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution nineteen thirty-two passes. Thank you guys. Good job. Uh, need to note that John Haldeman from the city of Huxley is here as well. John, we appreciate you being here in support of these projects and everything you're doing in, uh, in Huxley and to everybody else who can't as part of this. Thank you very much for being here.
I would just like to note something that Dan Colain said to me many years ago, I guess several years ago. Uh-oh, no, no, it's good. Um, when I was writing as a journalist about economic development, and Dan said to me that it's your existing companies where you're going to get your most growth from. That's why you need to pay attention to them, keep them right. So once again, I think that today is approving that Dan has passed on a good piece of insight to me. Thank you.
Super. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright, we're to consider a duration of minutes from both September twenty-eighth, I mean, August twenty-eighth and September fourth. It'd be great if we could do the minutes from September twenty-eighth. Uh, August twenty-eighth and September fourth.
As presented.
Second.
Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions as listed, board.
Uh, as presented.
As presented.
Olson?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda, board. Please pull number item five for, um, discussion.
And I move a consideration, uh, consent agenda is Sanders, five.
Second.
Motion and a second. Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. So five is consideration of Title VI assurances, uh, Title IV or Title VI?
Six.
Title VI, so it's, so Title, yeah. Um, Title VI assurances and agreements with the Iowa Department of Transportation. And so what's going on here is every time we have a new board chair, Ethan, I'll look at you so that I don't miss anything here. Every time we have a new board chair, we've gotta resubmit these. But now there's also a new document that there's some question of whether we've got it submitted or not, and it needs to be on record for some of the things that conservation's doing. You wanna clarify for me? Just so that we're getting the right thing done here. So as part of our package, we had some things that we don't need to execute, but they're already executed.
Morning, Ethan.
Good morning. Ethan Anderson, kinda turns off this, uh, your, your correct rate that this, uh, is probably part of Iowa Nature Trail, um, Huxley to Slater. And it's gonna be a federal DOT, so US DOT. And that's the first document with five dependencies. So you've got A, three, and you have to deal with whether or not there's D restrictions if we're ever transplant the land. Uh, and then there's the second chapter, which is the existing signed in two thousand and sixteen, uh, Iowa DOT. I would say spirit. So I think we got this request from someone at DOT saying maybe these two things signed. I think they were unaware that we'd already signed the second one. Maybe they missed the re-signing, second one. So we're just asking that the first one be signed and that should satisfy their, their check.
Okay, questions or comments? So our action today would be that I go ahead and sign the documents that need to be signed, but we're not gonna re-execute the documents we already have done.
That's correct.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Move consideration Title VI assurances and agreements as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Chitty?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Uh, moving on, we don't have any public area items, no additional items, no agency reports, wow. Um, so we are to departmental reports, and we've got information technology. Barb today, yeah, Barb?
Morning, Barb.
Good morning, board. Mark's saying that information technology. We've been busy. So I wonder if everybody's looking at a tracker. Um, first of all, I wanted to start out to tell you a little bit about what we're doing with hardware replacements. Um, if you recall, we did buy that CADMI, and that app is now installed. And just wanted to explain a little bit how we do that. So we have our disaster recovery location at the HSC building. So what we do is we always put the latest delivery, it's the new hardware here in the admin building, take this device and then put it at HSC. So we always have something, the oldest is six years old and the latest is one year old. So every three years, we refresh our hardware. So the three-year-old device is going over to HSC and that will be there for three years. So when it retires, it'll be six years old. So we just completed that second step of getting rid of the old. So now the old net app is going to go on our, our auction. And we, I'll talk a little bit more about that. We're excited about being able to auction some of these items to our employees and all of it. Um, we did also install a new spam filter, and you probably have noticed that your mailboxes are filling up like crazy because we are weeding ourselves off of the light up solution. I think we've already pulled the plug on that. It looks like it's been seamless. Um, I've had no complaints. I did send out a little email last week telling people how they could refresh their spam configurations and, um, seems to be going well, so, knock on wood. Um, we are stuck in another situation where we're going to, Microsoft does this to us every couple of years. Um, we're gonna have to give her a muller Windows seven computers by January. They didn't give us as much time. With XP, uh, they gave us a two-year notification and we had a hundred and seventy of that time to replace. And then they even extended it. This time we got less than a year to replace them. We started, we have a five-year rotation on our laptops and PCs, and we're at the point where we're at about a hundred that we need to replace before January. So that keeps ten and zero.
How many do we have in this year, bud?
Uh, well, we have some from last year, so budget-wise, we'll be fine.
Okay.
We won't have to go over budget. Um, we did, we did look at that at budget time, so there's no surprises there. Um, and then just wanted to talk a little bit about our ROIC phones. Um, we did meet with our vendor, Aria, and, uh, our contract expires in June. And he mentioned some of the new things that were coming with the phones. Uh, last time when we bought phones, we bought our phones and there were six different models to choose from. Uh, this year, this time around, there's going to be phones with one gig capability, which is appealing to the assessor's office because if you look at the way our PCs are set up, our computers plug into our phones. So the phone is what throttles how much network connectivity we get to our computers. And sometimes, especially with GIS, when you're pulling up big map, the phone will constrain that and it doesn't flow up as quickly or as, as well. So we do have two of those that we're testing right now. They've noticed a little bit of improvement. Um, haven't been testing them long enough really to, to see if it's gonna be something that we wanna pursue down the road. And then also, uh, in June, when it does come time to refresh, they'd like us to refresh our phones. Our phones will still work, but, um, they will need to decide whether we wanna purchase new phones or lease them. If we're gonna replace homes every three years, leasing might be a better option.
Why, so, so I'm not having any problem with that, why do we need to replace homes?
Because they're not gonna support that many different models. They wanted to streamline it to support one, and really internally, we've done most of the support. The only time we've had to reach out to vendors, like if one breaks, so we've had to replace it. So my thought would be we continue to use our phones and then as they break, refresh them with a new model that they're proposing. But we'll have that discussion in more detail at later times.
Okay.
Uh, just a little bit, uh, touch base on what's going on with the multi-agency. We did do, um, a refresh of the twenty-eight agreement. It's in draft form. We haven't met yet to discuss the changes. And this is especially important because it'll reflect on your security agreement. We've got a lot of the smaller agencies that wanna take part in this, and we don't know, for one, what to charge them. We don't wanna bear the brunt of the costs ourselves. And then number two, so as we're bringing in the smaller agencies that have, um, volunteers and people who are less trained, who's gonna support that when they have issues? So those are some things, that's the next step. And then also, just wanted to point out that we're working out some new disaster recovery for the multi-agency. We do have, as far as networking is concerned, we have the two networks in place. So if one fails, it falls over to the other. But we don't have any disaster recovery within the, maybe I'll back up the steps. So the way the patrol cars connect to our servers is through a hot and cold net motion. So, okay, say there's a disaster, the network is fine, but the net motion server fails. So we're trying to find a separate solution for that. We've got three entities that need to connect to that one server. So if that server went down, all three entities would be without access. And they wouldn't be able to, like, call in plates or look and see, you know, what's going on with tickets and everything. So we're looking at a, a secondary net motion server that would be within the circle that we created with different switches and things. So if one switch went down, it would go to the next switch and we'd all be able to access the secondary server. It's kinda in the planning scenes right now, but just wanted to give you a heads up. But we're always thinking of disaster recovery and what we can do as a fallback. Right, we have a lot to do with.
Uh, the Nevada City Council last night, they spent ninety thousand dollars on body cameras. And as we have body cameras in the sheriff's department, I was wondering, as that video is generated, how, is that held in the car or is that passed through? How is that done?
What we have over at the, and I'm not sure how Nevada does it, what we do for Story County is we've got access points. You can either come into the building, and I know that our IT staff over there helps out a lot if they have issues, but they can either park in the parking lot, we've got an access point in the parking lot, offload their videos and then their shift, and then, or they can come inside and offload.
So there's no real-time streaming?
No.
Okay.
No, they offload.
It was just one of those, curiosity, listening to the pros and cons of different platforms and what the likes and dislikes were, so I just, uh...
But the first generation of our body cameras is kinda interesting. So the first generation, we were, we were an early adopter here in Story County of body cameras. But the first generation that we had, you had to actually take out, I don't know if it was a USB or what, what it was, but you had to take something and plug it in in order to download. That and the fact that one of our cameras burnt one of our deputies, the battery kept being up, uh, is where we made the decision, I can't remember if you guys were on the board, but we made the decision to spend, I don't know, thirty or forty thousand unbudgeted dollars in order to upgrade all of our cameras, um, and, um, and have this easier access and be able to store it all in one spot for, for easier access when they're investigating.
Okay, that gets me there. Just the Nevada system activates them and they hit the lights. They, there's a conscious effort to turn the body camera on, so you say you hit the lights, the body camera turns on.
But, yes, but it's recorded. It's not, um, it's not like somebody in the office can watch it.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying how it's generated, how, how.
Which I think we're.
And ours are that way too.
Yeah.
Okay, ours are, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a manual process, it's a direct.
No, I was just, once again, I was listening to a narrative of getting to the meeting part that we just had, or before you.
Okay. Um, just looking at other projects, so we're doing a lot of software updates as well. Um, we did replace our antivirus. We spent a little more than we wanted to on this new product. It replaced Kaspersky. There were a lot of, there were a lot of bad rumors around that software, which were not true.
But you're happy with where we're going, even though we spent a little more than we, than we planned?
You know, what I like about this new product, and we checked the Gartner reviews and we asked a lot of vendors, we looked at a lot of different products, we had a lot of demos. What I like about this one is, and I won't name it, but if, if something comes now or virus, anything comes into your system, it's automatically flagged and stopped. But then what, and then a dashboard automatically pops up on our computers to tell us, oh, this, this happened. And it tells where it came from, how it entered your system, where it went, what files it touched, where, what point it was at when it was flagged and removed, and where it's at now and what we're gonna do with it. We love that, we're excited to it. Otherwise, you just get a message saying, oh, you have this virus and it's clean. Okay.
No, we want you to have all.
Research it, and, because we always wanna know, you know, how it happened and where it came from.
Sure.
And then that gives us a way too that we can train the user in case they clicked on something that was unsavory. It gives us a lot more control. Um, and, and another upgrade we need to do, that's an important one, is the pro-lower, a couple of persons behind. Um, and the, the lady that used to support it has retired, so there's a little bit of transition going on. Um, we did fill out a questionnaire, so they had some ideas of what our system was like and, and it's a lot stick. We haven't filled out yet, but, um, so that's in our future. That should be quite a significant change, and it's got a lot of new features that kind of bring these offices along a little bit more too.
Good.
Uh, another project we're working on is security cams for the jail. We're bringing that in-house now. I've talked about it before. Um, it's gonna be significant cost savings. We're adding some things onto it, so I don't have the final numbers right now, but, um, we're no longer going to be paying the vendors to support a product that they would never enter the phone regularly, so. IT did most of the support, except we could not do anything server-wise because we didn't have access to the server, and now we own all that equipment, it's all in-house. So when we get a call at three AM, we won't be saying, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I can't help you, we'll be able to log in and help. And, you know, looking back, the most problem that we had were just the windows upgrades weren't being applied in a timely fashion. Now we automatically apply those, so. I think we're gonna be happy we're bringing that in-house. Um, also, something near to your hearts, the audiovisual refresh.
Do we need a refresher?
Actually, we'd have to soon on that projector, get a little squirrel up there to chase the dot around and around and around and get colored. I'm sorry.
So we've looked at five different vendors. We've got, um, quotes all the way from thirty thousand dollars to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the same features. We've narrowed it down to two vendors. Um, would you like them to come and do a presentation?
I, I think as we move on and we see, you know, when we have someone that comes in and make a presentation, especially if they're not used to presenting and that type of thing, I think that's one of our issues. I think the other one is, is I'm, I'm learning about how long it takes in government. And so if we could hear the two presentations now, we might be in someplace to look by after the first of the year if, you know, to move forward and get something fixed or we'd be able to provide to you here at the stall more input. If we see that, you know, that it's missing a component, or we take a look and say, no, well, we don't want that component after all. So I'd like to have the two that you've selected within our price range that are providing for us. I'd like to see that presentation.
So, 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 Morris, I, I think, I sit here, uh, and I completely, I appreciate and support. support your involvement as we're working through this. I'm not, I'm not sure that the whole board needs to take this up. Marty, I'll look to you.
Okay.
I just, I want something that works, something that we can display, something that records, something that you can actually hear the audio. That's all I want, and I trust our experts to figure it out. Now, I like, I like your critical thinking, and I've appreciated you bringing that critical thinking to this, but I don't know that it's necessary for something like this. We have determined and budgeted that we need to upgrade this system. I would suggest that we leave it to our expert staff, maybe with questions coming from one supervisor. Again, Marty, so if, if one of the two of us wants to weigh in as well, we need to do it here at the board table, but I don't feel the need to weigh in on this. I just want something that's going to work.
Okay. I agree with that.
I would, I'd turn it back. It was two years ago, sheriff's department wanted to change out handguns in that, side arms, and I didn't feel, you know, shoot them, just, you know, just sit there and, I would say, okay, I see why you don't like your Sig 229, I get the H2K block, you know, on the nine versus the forty cal, without getting too far into weeds. But I am not that vested in what it is. I know that this is clearly in your wheelhouse. I don't feel that I need to be drawn in. I figure that Barbara Department is going to be dueful in the sense that they're going to bring us the most camera for the dock.
So what I would ask is, if Barb could just organize a meeting with whoever it is that's been weighing in on this, whoever our experts are, and supervisor Olson, can you guys make the best decision you can, stay within budget? If it's beyond the budget, or if you think there is something that rises to the level that we need to have the conversation at the board table, great. Otherwise, just make the decision and let's try to get something.
Okay. Sounds like a plan? There's a lot of options out there, and your needs are pretty simple. So it might confuse you to hear them tell you all of those missiles, but sure, I'll have them in, and if you'd like to sit down on some of that presentation. Okay, all the phone, that'd be great.
That sounds good.
Good.
All right, thanks. Also, I just want to talk a little bit, we're, it's not really a new backup solution. We're going to do an additional backup solution. Ransomware has become such a high factor in vulnerability of a lot of, not only counties but cities. I don't recall, the city of Atlanta, Georgia, was down for over a week because of ransomware. It's still, haven't fully recovered. What we'd like to do is what we call an air gap solution. So right now, we have snapshots, all kinds of snapshots that we save until we run out of room, and then if something happens, we can revert back to some snapshot or find. But what if something resided in your snapshot and maybe went through that and you didn't touch it? So really, the snapshot has the same ransomware. What we're proposing is, I have an air gap solution where there's a separate offsite backup in addition to the snapshot. We're looking at pricing right now, and it's kind of something we'll look at a budget time, if it's an additional cost, if it's something we can absorb this year, we'd like to pull up and do that. As you can see, we're working on a lot of projects, but we really feel it's important to cover our backs double. It's an IT thing, so perhaps we know a little bit.
No, I'm, I've lost data at one point, I mean, major data, yes, I was...
And we don't want that. Also, we probably saw the email tomorrow, we're doing a switch replacement. We've got about seven of these switches countywide, and we're doing it the same way we do our PCs, we're going to do rotation. A switch can last a little longer than a computer, we've got about seven year rotations, so every ten years, we're having a complete refresh of our switches. This one, we won't affect this building so much because it's getting done at the five o'clock. The sheriff's office will lose some faxing capabilities because the T-1 does come into this building, but other than that, I think we'll be fine. Also, I want to talk a little bit about our auction experience. It has just been great. We got this idea from facilities when they sold the car. And moving back, what we do with our old inventory is we have a donation list that we, that's our first go-to list. It gets now to the point where a lot of the people accepting computer or printer donations would prefer laptops. So we only have so many laptops, so, and then we were, for a while there, there was a gentleman that was taking them and salvaging them, salvaging the parts and refurbishing them, and we didn't think that was really the way to go. A lot of stuff ended up in land, or anything like that. So we've opened up an account, what's this, public surplus dot com, and we sold our car that way, actually. Got a lot more than even what it was, what Killing Blue Books said we could get for it, and I actually saw it in Marshall County the other day driving around, and so it's still going, it's so cool. There's only one of those, it had to be ours, but...
Thank goodness there was only one of those.
It's very, it was a very great experience, and we haven't really had a problem with people coming in and picking up stuff. They, there was a little, like, oh, gosh, can't you do it on a weekend, something, but we're holding it to within business hours, and it's worked out really great. And a lot of the employees here at Sory County have bought computers and been very excited about it, so I think that's been great. I just wanted to add another bullet point, and then I'll be done. I want to talk about the analog pole. It's moving along a lot more quickly than we anticipated. We didn't budget for any network capability for that, but we have been looking at different options. And what I think makes the most sense is a microwave connection to this building. And we've been in contact with a company in Southwest Iowa, and we are proposing a solution that would be about fifteen thousand dollars, which is a lot less than others we've looked at. I think it's a lot more stable. We looked at a wind stream connection, nine hundred a month. This is fifteen thousand from the get-go, no monthly charge, nothing else, that's it.
How high would we have to go on the analog pole?
There would have to be an antenna on the building, on the roof, which, you know, there's another, we don't know what the weight requirements would be for that, so that'd be more exploration, I just wanted to throw it out there. Now that the building's getting remodeled, I was asked, well, how soon can we get on the county network? So what this microwave connection would do, it would give access to the shared drives. It would give them email, and they would have to do web mail, they would be on our phone system, they can afford it to dial in. We do have enough spare homes that we wouldn't have to buy anymore, so just kind of put this in your thinking pattern, just as a reminder.
With fifteen thousand, one-time charge, is there a yearly fee though? Because who provides the hardware maintenance?
Includes the first bike years of maintenance.
Okay.
You know, we had to, like, ask a ton of questions, but it seems like too good to be true. Looking at some of the other solutions, like the same microwave solution, we were looking at backups for this building to Ames, it was fifty thousand dollars, so we're like, how can we get fifteen? And a direct fiber, you've got the red road, we can't really do that, be tied up from our industry to get comments. So I think this is an excellent solution, I thought I'd offer out to, we can talk more about it in the future, but just...
No, I think it's worth developing and bringing back to us when the time comes for decisions.
Okay. That's all I have, any questions?
Questions for Barb?
Had a GIS meeting last week, and that point, whole host here with the city of Ames and department heads, and there was an interesting concept going forward. City of Ames was talking about purchasing and maintaining drone and/or drones, and you saw some desire there being expressed by the county assessor's office too, as far as generating all this video and posting it. I mean, but they started talking on capacities, because the thing is, that is real-time asphalt versus a drawn document that may not necessarily reflect that which is happening in real time. Because I would, I'd turn to the outdoor pipeline, it would've been nice to have the overlay associated, generated, okay, this was happening on this day, bang, 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 as opposed to an inspector, whatnot. That's an aside. As far as hosting all that information that a drone would generate, would that be a dollar consideration, or we have ability to cloud that information? How would we, if we said as a county, we were going to purchase, because I know sheriff's department's got a little desire to lean in that direction, if they generate, the information that they would generate that we wanted to keep, would that accrue a cost to us?
The licensing itself would be huge, and it's very tricky. I just saw a webinar on those, and there's been a little discussion with the IT county community. Also, I'm not an advocate of cloud storage, but, you know, this is actually public information, if it's maps and things like that. If you brought that storage internally, it would be huge, and it would probably heat up all of your network bandwidth, so you'd have to have some kind of a... And our network bandwidth is expandable, but that does come as a cost too. So I think it's a very costly adventure.
So I would, I would just urge caution for us as a board that there will need to be lots and lots and lots and lots of discussion and consideration before Sory County enters the realm of drone ownership, and all the implications that go with that. We do have, and so, so I fully recognize that there are some things that drones can do that we need to have access to, but I'm a huge fan of having a third-party contractor provide those services rather than the county. That said, there, there could, there's a threshold where you guys could win me and, and I think make a reasonable case that, that somewhere we need to go, or the two of you could decide we're going into the drone business in the county. I just think it's going to require a lot of conversation before we ever get there.
This was, the conversation came to a dead end because we did not realize, because as we generate records here that are from a prior century and a half, okay, maybe there was something that a drone would generate that we wanted to keep a video record of on a historical basis, what would be the downside, what would be the hardships, and then the dollars entailed. And I guess we, the conversation's out there, and I'm going to bar there, I thought it answered.
Perfect.
And there's something exciting that's, you know, things could change. This is new, and as you've seen with all the other technology-related things, as different information comes out, the costs will come down, and different ideas will come out, so I think it's something to watch, keep on our radar.
Very good. Regulation, need a pilot.
Well, have us license, something we have to, but, once again, there's, there are conversations of different departments here within the county that are looking at...
Lots of different logistical conversations, but also philosophical conversations that we're going to have to have before the government goes down the road.
Absolutely.
Anything else for Barb?
Thank you, Barb, appreciate it.
Thank you, Barb.
Good job, Barb. All right, now we get to hear about Crestview. Jerry?
Morning, Jerry Moore.
Good morning.
Jerry, I felt progress.
Yeah, things are progressing.
Outstanding.
I'm hearing a buzz from people who are driving by. It's been about three months since our department has come to the board to talk about Crestview. And you recall at the May 27 meeting, there was a request to renew the temporary hoop building for the purpose of using it to dismantle hazardous materials from mobile homes, that was the primary purpose of it. It was approved with conditions, the primary condition that was approved was connected to the number of units that were supposed to be removed by the end of August, August 31st. They were to have no more than eighteen mobile homes, and then by November 29, all of the mobile homes are supposed to be removed. At the June 5th Board of Health meeting, we took some direction from the Board of Health, our department, and environmental health. We were asked to go out and do an assessment at the end of June and at the end of July, try to assess the situation, try to determine how many units were there, and determine if there were any violations on the property. And we did our first assessment at the end of June, there were thirty-eight units, so we were a little concerned because that's the same number that we saw at the end of May. But when we went back at the end of July, there were twenty-four units. So he, they had moved fourteen units. Emily and I did a follow-up on August 31st with Brent Limer, the property owner, and there were close to sixteen units. He conferred with that total. If you recall, in the southwest portion of the site, there were fifteen, I think, decks, used decks. Those are all gone, he's offered those for free, it is a good price sometimes. And there's a lot of recycling going on of materials, he's trying to reuse, repurpose materials, a lot of metal, there's piles of the material that are in different locations, there's a lot of block material, he uses the block material for shoring up the existing mobile homes that are being moved from the site. Some of the violations that are still active would be with regard to the film material that was brought in, the southwest portion of the property. Normally, in a perfect world, we would ask for information for a site plan to be submitted to address the proposed use of the material, to address groundwater management, erosion control. There was some filling of the sewage lagoon that was done for what we were told, to create space for storage. This was early on, before Mr. Limer decided to close the facility. There was salvage material in various locations, primarily in the northwest part of the site, and then several unoperable, unlicensed vehicles and trucks. So these are the site photos that we took from the end of August. This is looking to the south, this is near the entrance to the facility, and you're looking at the green space, that's where the fifteen decks were located. This is looking to the north, and again, if you look at the site from Lincoln Way, the first two private drives are vacant, void of mobile homes. So that's now what you see are green spaces and trees. This is looking to the west at that same first two private drives. This is the front entrance area into the facility, will actually extend, walk through to the northeast, and then to the west, and then back again. But this is looking north at that main entrance, there was a few vehicles, semi-truck. Some of these items are being stored for other people. The mobile home that you see there was staged, ready to be removed. This is the, looking west from the east side of the temporary hoop building, you can see a trailer there with various metal material that he's recycling. This is the northeast portion of the, of the site, there were five mobile homes in this location. I think he uses that area for staging, processing. By the way, that's the same cat, I think he had two kittens, and the lower left-hand corner is the little cat. Northeast corner, again, vehicles, some of those are his, some are of other persons. This is the northeast corner, we're going to be extending, walking to the west, there's three mobile homes on that north drive. Looking to that northwest area, again, there's a lot of material that is being collected, some blocks, I think the goal again is to, you know, use those when the units leave the site. But I think he's probably going to have more blocks, so he'll have to find a purpose for those, you know, the construction will be pretty handy. Looking to the east, that's that north drive again, there's one or two units on the south side, three on the north. Looking toward the lagoon area, this is looking east on the west drive, you can see stacks of concrete blocks. There's an area there for axles from some of the units, I think he said he tries to reuse them if some of these older units get locked up, if he has a source for reusing if those were... This is looking east on the west side, it's actually on the north side of the hoop building, you see the hoop building on the east, on the right side of the screen. Looking to the south side of the hoop building, again, this material was from a year ago, it was going out in the process. This is that west drive, I think there's one unit on that west end, and then that's looking back out toward the entrance. And again, Mr. Limer is on track, the target was eighteen at the end of August 31st, there were sixteen. The next target is November 29, when all of the mobile homes are to be removed. If they aren't, we'll plan on doing a site review on that day, we'll work with the county attorney's office on the next steps with regard to whether or not any enforcement action is needed, and then we'll update the board supervisors' meeting.
Hey, it's perfect. How about if we just expect that Brent is going to continue the outstanding progress that he's made? And, and I'll say this, because I've been a little hard on Brent from time to time, what a great job, what a, what a super job, really getting it going there in June and making noticeable and... and making noticeable and reasonable progress between then and the end of August.
After that first review out, you know, in June, we were a little concerned because it didn't seem to change. But after that, he's really.
That's good stuff. Questions? Comments?
Congratulations to you and the time that you put in. First, since you got here, employed by the county, that's one market. It's the same story.
A lot of departments are involved.
A lot of departments are required of different things. And we are also seeing endpoints showing up. Tell me about that hoop building. You got an endpoint there. He's not ever used it as he presented it or represented it to you. I mean, that's going to be one of the things confronting us here going forward.
He's got actually thirty days after November twenty-ninth to remove it. If he has a plan to use it for another purpose, that would be permitted within commercial industrial district requirements. He can certainly request that to be removed. We actually identified that as an issue that we had, but it's not in our plans.
Boris, anything?
Just echoing all the thanks that everyone has worked on it. I see you in the bathroom too.
Yeah.
RT too, because you worked on it. So thank you also, Mr. Lemur, for moving forward.
Yeah, it feels, it feels like we actually see a light at the end of the tunnel that we have a reset wait for case. It's not an oncoming term. So that's, that's not terrible.
There's a lot of happy people involved in taking the property.
All right. Jerry, thanks. Outstanding. Liaison assignment is part of your first this week.
I tell you what, the Burke project is.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I skipped. You're going to have to hold this second. Public forum number two is an opportunity for members of the public to address anything you want to address. If I wish to do so, come on up. Seeing no one move the microphone now, Mark.
Just, I would like to say congratulations to the Nevada City Council. That's no small thing to do and accept the tenure of even to get the industry to grow itself within the community. But I think you were right when you said that. Long ago, conversation with Ann Colhane was the fact to take care of what you have and make sure that you can sustain them and grow them as opposed to putting all your efforts into acquiring. So I think that's what happened tonight. I think, I look forward to the conversation as we, you know, return to staff, bring it back to us, and then we go from there.
Yeah, to Loris's point, right? So four different projects before the state right now in four different communities, Huxley, Ames, Nevada, and Story City. Three of them are existing companies looking at expansion. One of them a new company to our area. That is all really, really phenomenal for us. Anything else? Loris?
Okay. Well, since I spent most of last week, almost all of last week, at the Federal Housing Conference. And it was exciting because there were several Story County residents there attending different tracks. I stay with the follow the money and the development type track. Brenna Dryer was there some of the time representing the development or AADC side. And sometimes she put over Story County Housing Trust at hat. I understand Amber was there. I never saw her, but she was there one of the days for the housing trust. And then also Hope Mathew was there. And there were, she's on the housing trust, but also YSS, positional housing. There were two people from emergency residence project. So, so I really am going to try and see if everybody wants to get together for coffee and just kind of integrate from whatever. Like I said, Marty, I brought some materials back for you. Okay? And the key point, the high point of that is, is that now we're trying to find a time where people from the Story County Medical Center and the city of Nevada and economic development. And I kind of cast on what I heard in the development sessions to talk about, could we maybe get some housing started here? Especially around the Story County Medical Center, older campus, north campus, I guess you call it. But also what is viable. So I'll keep you guys apprised of that. My role is only to go ahead and bring the right people together. I even reached out to Vanessa Baker-Latimer yesterday about her experience with tax credits and housing. And, and then take it out of the way, hopefully, or provide assistance as needed and requested, I don't know, whatever. So that was exciting. Deb and Alyssa and I had our monthly formal meeting yesterday. And I just wanted to let you guys know, I kind of mentioned this in a previous update. But Deb and Alyssa have accepted my request, because it was a request, not an order, okay? To take a look at how we might integrate asks from like, say, the tourism, other big groups or whatever that might be requesting money headed into our July sessions, or sorry, January sessions. So it's not such a, you know, kind of a last-minute deal. And also Deb has said that she would take a look at what we do for those pilot projects through asset and not through asset. And I mean, she more than anyone knows how asset works and how stuff would flow and who might come up. So just to let you two know that I did ask for some staff time that way. So that's really.
Yeah, but, but I think what you asked for falls very clearly in their job description, which I think is a hundred percent appropriate and perfect to handle it. And housing, I'd just say, first of all, thank you for attending the conference. And thank you to everybody who attended the housing conference. The reality, which was underscored by our original conversations today, is we've got to continually focus. And I'm saying we, larger than the board of supervisors, we as a, as a county and as a community need to continually focus on housing and doing what we can for housing at every level, right? Some, some of our levels of housing tend to take care of themselves. Some of them are going to require interventions of all kinds to get done. But we need to stay focused on that reality because as you add people, as you add jobs and then the people and the people that come with the people, housing will continue to be an issue. And the, the services that go along with that, and I think specifically of daycare when I say that, but more than just the services that go with that. And it's a big job that we've got. Anything else, Loris?
That's it.
Okay. So for me, just, just an announcement that I found out yesterday that I was appointed to the National Association of Counties International Economic Development Task Force. I'm the only member from Iowa on that task force and really honored to be asked and excited to serve. And I think I'm up to seventeen now. I keep saying fourteen, but I did the math. I went through and counted. I think I'm up to seventeen committees and, and task forces and boards and it's a lot of, that's a lot of stuff we bite off. I gave you, but I'm really excited about this. Anything else for us?
No.
All right. So now we're going to talk about going into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one point five. Specifically to talk about some of our emergency plans and our safety plans. Ethan, you want to talk us through any of that and take us into closed session, given the fact we head that way?
Yeah, except for just state of purpose for closed session. That's in, so Iowa Code twenty-one point five, one K. Discuss information contained in the, of course, the custody of everybody. They're confidential. And it says, well, safety, planning, emergency preparedness.
Good.
And that's twenty point five, twenty-two point five, sub fifty.
Any questions for Ethan or a motion to move into closed session?
Motion.
Yeah, I was going to say if there was a question for you about why we move it into closed session, if not?
I'd move that we move into closed session pursuant to the chapters that we call chapter or chapters that we're just citing.
Motion in a second. Discussion. Olson?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. So we'll recess for five minutes. We'll come back in closed session. Once the closed session is done, we'll come back into open session and deal with anything we need to deal with before adjourning this meeting. Renaissance, man. All right. All right. So now it's, it is eleven, we'll call it eleven fifty-four. And we're coming back into open session after a closed session discussion about our safety plan and emergency operations. Or we got to hear the details of the plan, which, which for obvious reasons are not public information. What's your pleasure as far as action on that plan?
I would move that we approve the applicable documents as presented and ask the risk manager to facilitate distribution, distribution of them as appropriate to various departments and make adjustments to the test to reflect the applica, applica, applicability to, to our various abilities.
Yeah. So just noting that depending on what building we're talking about and where it's located, there's, there's some different processes in place.
Correct.
So we have a motion.
We have a second.
We have a second. Ethan, anything that we need to shore up on this before we take action here? Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. So we have that adopted. If there's nothing further, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
Is that it?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
I don't know. I think that we're out.
So you can start thinking about and so you can.